Mr. Murphy.
Hey.
Hey. He is. I'm.
Hello, everybody. Don't worry, David. Pretty good.
Good.
One of the lucky ones.
Indeed. So just waiting for Riley now, I think. And Mr. Chandler, too.
So, Mr. Mayor, I see a grandfather clock in your house.
Yes.
Does it chime?
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah.
And you've adjusted to it?
Uh, I turned it off.
Ah!
Because of all these zooms.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, oh yeah. But I also have a shift clock that goes every half hour. You know, so I've got gongs going all over the place.
Keeps you on your toes.
Let's see, we got Richard on the phone, I see. Okay.
Do we know that Riley's coming?
Is he?
I don't know, that was my question, was he, is he?
I haven't heard from him.
We'll check.
Okay. Is, uh, Chief Palmer here? Oh, okay.
In the chambers.
All right, great. All right, terrific. Well, why don't we, uh, if Riley joins us, we can make note of it. Um, are we all set to go, Mr. Twig?
Yes, we are.
All right. Well, why don't we then go ahead and call this, uh, work session to order? This is, uh, Monday, October 5th, 2020, 1:00 PM. This is a work session of the, uh, City of Lincoln City City Council. And, uh, could we have a roll call, please, Mr. Twig?
Certainly, Mayor. Anderson.
Yes. Yep.
Casper.
Here.
Hinton.
Yes, here.
Hoagland is not here yet. Mark.
I'm here.
And Parsons.
President.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, you know, reminding us all, uh, this work session, the intent of this, uh, work session is to provide a preliminary assessment of the effectiveness and efficiency of the management of the Echo Mountain complex emergency. The intent is to also receive input from the city council as to the effectiveness and efficiency of the management of this emergency. Uh, we'll have some opening remarks from, uh, you know, Chief Palmer, and then, uh, Mr. Murphy, Ken Murphy, will, uh, kind of talk about the, uh, public input. And, uh, Ken, uh, just so you know, I, I think I have, and I'm sure council has asked, uh, seems there's a huge, uh, surge of, of public outcry out there wanting, uh, everybody to see their written letters. Um, so, uh, maybe, you know, as we get done, um, I'm not sure of the purpose of all that, because I know you're going to summarize. Um, but, uh, if, if at all possible, we might try to post those or make them public, or, but I, I would hope that through this there would be an explanation of what we're going to do with all this information. And, uh, you know, I, I think there's always that conspiracy theory going on that we're hiding something. So, you know, what's going to be made public and, and when would be helpful, so. With that, uh, Mr. Palmer, Chief Palmer? There he is, all right.
Sorry, everybody having some technical difficulties here, so. All right, everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, um, we've been gathering our information, uh, for the last couple of weeks, uh, kind of going over what went well and, and what we can learn to improve on. And, um, as we get into this, uh, you know, Ken will be the primary lead on, uh, discussion points. But, um, a couple of points I'd like to make as we open this thing up is that, uh, David, you got that picture up for everybody to see? So, this is, uh, a picture of, uh, a number of our city employees. And one thing I'd like everybody to keep in mind is that, uh, we should never forget that during disasters like this, that city employees also may be going through and experiencing some of these losses and part of this disaster. We've got employees that, uh, were in the fire zones and many of them that were, uh, otherwise affected by, uh, this event. We had, uh, six employees that, uh, lost their homes entirely. Um, with, in, um, five households. Um, all Otis residents, thirty employees, including those who lost their homes, were displaced for the longer evacuation period, some longer than others. Uh, we had forty employees total that evacuated. Five had evacuated families and remained at work. And, uh, just, uh, want to let the council know that you should be very proud of the city employees that were doing a lot of, uh, independent thinking in a crisis when communications were either non-existent or limited. And in addition to that, you had, um, employees that during the course of this disaster, while they were suffering their own losses and knew that, uh, um, they very likely may be going home to nothing, um, were still at work doing their job and doing it well. Um, and just a sidebar of information that, um, you know, one of those, uh, people was in my dispatch center. Um, and a couple of them were in a position of not knowing whether or not they lost property. But in the course of, uh, September 7th to September 11th, those dispatchers handled 4,244 total calls at their consoles, 372 of which were 911 calls. And just to give you an, uh, a base of reference, in 2019, for that same period of time, they only took seventy-five 911 calls and 380 other calls for 552. So, these people were swamped, but they continued to do their jobs professionally, as did the other city employees. Um, and so, uh, we must, as a city and as citizens, try to make choices that are effective and are efficient based on the facts. We're dealing with a tremendous amount of disinformation in a multi-jurisdictional event, uh, during which, um, a, a lot of things beyond our control were, were already either in play, whether it was road closures, uh, or things like that. And in addition to how this fire, uh, impacted our ability, uh, to communicate in the first place. So, um, there's a lot of, a lot of information to be considered, but we hope that the information that Ken and I are about to present will, um, be food for thought. And, uh, but it will have to be taken and analyzed by you folks and, um, priorities determined on where we're going to focus our time, uh, our efforts and, uh, our resources to try to do this better, uh, in the future. Uh, the last reminder I just, just make, and I think everybody is aware of that, but despite the frustration of folks out there on the street and, um, in our own house, um, we got through that whole event without a single loss of life. We don't have any reported missing persons. I'm not aware of any serious injuries. And even during our evacuation and the traffic jams that ensued as we tried to get people out of town, uh, we didn't even have a crash. So, I'm attributing that to a lot of effort put in by our staff, uh, attributing that to a little bit of luck and attributing that to some, um, good judgment exercised by our citizens to get us through this event, uh, in that situation. That's a pretty remarkable statistic for us compared to what's gone on in other communities. That's my basic introduction, I'll, uh, turn this over to Ken.
Great, thank you, Chief. Um, so I will go ahead, uh, and just give an overview of the citizen comments, and I think we'll, Mr. Chandler will post them, uh, afterwards. Okay. So, uh, broken out into some categories here. Uh, evacuation, uh, the time it took, no one directing traffic, and two road projects that took place at the same time. Those were the three items under evacuation. The next area was communications. Uh, the sub areas that were talked about in the public input was county alerts were sporadic. Information was not clear. No radio communications. Residents didn't know what frequency to use on their police scanners. Email was limited when power is out. Internet-based phone systems were out. Battery-operated radios were not effective. And VRDs, vacation rental dwellings, didn't know what was happening. And cellphone service was out. In the firefighting and support services arena, uh, comments were no airplanes with retardant. The hospital didn't have a power generator. Natural gas was shut off without notification. And broadband communications shut down. And then a list of recommendations, uh, that came out of the public input. Clear and frequent communications. Don't rely on the county to provide information. Leaders must be more visible. Emails are inadequate. Develop a plan for VRD education. Establish a workable channel of communications with the public. Use social media. Retrofit the tsunami alert system to include wildfire warnings. Install more alert systems. Widen Highway 101. Encourage people to sign up for Lincoln Alerts. Publish a list of what services work best for neighborhoods. Deploy trained staff in traffic disaster quickly. Make both lanes on Logan Road outbound. Limit guest parking for VRDs. Emergency preparedness information and evacuation routes must be required and posted in VRDs. Rules must be implemented requiring VRD management companies, one, to furnish properties with extensive emergency and safety information; two, requiring people to read and sign before booking that they have read and understand emergency instructions and agree to abide by them. And three, all properties must at a minimum have safety equipment, such as flashlights and emergency contact numbers. Next item is request all radio stations broadcast emergency alerts. Next one, police should ensure they make enough noise when evacuating neighborhoods in order to get attention to the "go now" message. Next one, Lincoln Alerts should get texts and alerts to Level 1 evacuations and change of evacuation sites much earlier. Next one is evacuate motels in zones and not all at once. Those closer to the ocean were in significantly less danger than those located next to the woodlands. Next one was future ODOT road closures should factor in major holidays, drought conditions, and wildfire dangers prior to scheduling complete closures. Maybe investigation into a bypass road for Lincoln City should be considered to contend, to contend with the congestion issue. Next one, Lincoln City needs a one-way traffic emergency evacuation plan. And the last item was let's conduct more emergency preparedness educational seminars this fall and make available brochures and flyers for the public. That is the recap of the, uh, public comment. And, uh, we'll, uh, get the information posted in full so that everybody can read it and, uh, go from there. So, uh, on the agenda, uh, I've kind of broken it down into four major buckets, as you can see in the packet, uh, to talk about things and to stimulate thought. And, uh, and then, uh, once I kind of highlight those, uh, we can kind of talk about, uh, some next steps and any recommendations that each one of the city council members may have. And, uh, just a reminder that, that any disaster, no matter what it is, uh, I would submit to you that we need to think of our families first and, uh, try and deal with that issue, because I can speak from experience. If you have somebody working in your EOC or working anywhere in your city departments, and they don't know the status of their family, uh, the chances are that employee may not be a hundred percent effective if they're worrying about their families. Plus, as Chief Palmer said, uh, many people were actually part of the evacuation and/or lost their homes. The second, uh, major point is communications are always tricky, even on a nice sunny day in Lincoln City. But when you're in a disaster scenario, uh, with this much issues of the straight-line winds and fires, uh, clearly, we're going to have some issues that, uh, probably are not within our control. Uh, cellphone providers, uh, it's hard to say. Uh, I think most of you are well aware that we, as individuals, can bring a cell system down. You don't need the weather or fires to do that. Uh, we can, uh, and there's so many different carriers, uh, it's hard to know who had the best coverage or who had partial coverage or who had no coverage. And, uh, I would remind people to think about on a sunny day in Lincoln City, even our police department does not have full coverage of every inch of the city of Lincoln City. So it's something that we're working on and clearly needs to be, uh, continue to work on. So, having said all that, the first area is communications. Uh, to and from the county, uh, it was hectic and sporadic. Uh, the county was just as much, uh, in a crisis as anybody else to include Lincoln City. Keeping in mind that the majority of, uh, the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, North Lincoln Fire and Rescue, and probably other people I'm not even aware of, and we have our Lincoln City Police Department, were out working, uh, trying to get people out of the fire area of Echo Mountain. And when I say Echo Mountain, I'm including Kimberly Mountain, Area 2. Uh, so internally, uh, you know, it was no different. Uh, a lot of our, uh, law enforcement from our Lincoln City Police Department, uh, was out, uh, going through the streets, helping the Sheriff's Department. And, uh, it was hectic and sporadic. Uh, so, uh, everybody was, uh, moving as fast as they could, uh, you know, with their loudspeakers on their police cars, trying to get the message out, trying to go through every single area they possibly could to do notifications. So, internal to the city, and some of this you already know, uh, but I'm going to bring it up. City website, uh, minimal, minimal effort at first. Uh, it's based on the current city capabilities. Uh, we have an old platform for our website. It is not something you can easily update in a click or two, uh, on your computer. It does require some effort and a dedicated person, uh, if they're not evacuating, uh, that type of thing. So, I think there's some areas there that we clearly can work on, uh, that we can do to improve that. And, uh, we don't necessarily have a dedicated person, uh, to watch all the social media sites in Lincoln City. Explorer Lincoln City staff, uh, has one person that can keep track of some of their sites. But when you look at all of the sites to include our new city Facebook page, uh, in a disaster, uh, that requires a dedicated person. Uh, and I would put persons, uh, because it's, takes a lot of time to go through that, validate the information or the disinformation that is going out and try and correct it. And, uh, a lot of this, as we talk through this today, I want you to keep in mind, uh, that, uh, these clearly and easily could be 24-hour operations. So, uh, when I say we need one person dedicated, probably means we need two people dedicated, uh, one for a day shift, one for a night shift, in a lot of these discussions today. So, uh, the status of our communication systems, you somewhat know, uh, already about that. Uh, we now have the city Facebook page. Uh, police department has a Facebook page. I have a Facebook page. And Emergency Preparedness Library has a Facebook page. And Parks and Recreation, uh, have a Facebook page. And, uh, Explorer Lincoln City has a Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter, and that type of thing. Uh, so, a lot of different sources of information, but not easily kept up, uh, during an actual event, unless we plan for it and have the resources to do it. Media releases, uh, we can do that. But sometimes, depending on, uh, what we're dealing with, uh, it may not be of great help. Uh, no degradation or negative comment, but if you post something and it goes to the News Guard or things like that, they only publish online. Uh, their papers, as you know, only come out on certain days of the week. And, uh, so it becomes somewhat dependent, uh, on being able to view the internet. And of course, uh, as you know, we had internet connectivity problems. Uh, information to AM radio stations, KBCH in Lincoln City, and then KNPT in Newport, uh, or slash the wave. Uh, definitely a possibility, but, uh, again, uh, KBCH does not have a generator. And, uh, they're only manned a certain amount of time. Uh, but we could, uh, have sent stuff to Newport, to the station down there, and, uh, kept them apprised. Amateur radio, uh, another form of communications that is usually pretty darn successful in any disaster. Uh, somewhat depends on how many people you have dedicated to that. They're usually volunteers. And what their network is and how they can pass information. But it is, uh, a pretty reliable system. We have sat phones. Uh, we have a couple of sat phones in the city. Uh, I don't know anyone, uh, in city council that had experience with them, but, uh, in a heavy cloud cover with smoke and everything, I would tell you the chance of them working is minimal at best. And even on a clear sunny day, uh, I've been known to walk around an office with a sat phone in my hand looking for a signal. Uh, so, uh, we do have a satellite trailer, but that only enhances, uh, the communications to a certain point. Uh, we do not have that many satellite phones in the city inventory. Lincoln Alerts, uh, I am yet to get a report, uh, from the county on how many people were contacted and how many people actually responded. Uh, I'm sure some of that was affected by internet-based phone systems or the internet and email and that type of thing. Uh, but, uh, that is something that's been advertised in this county ever since the first day I moved here and, uh, is always a recommendation. And, uh, so we'll get more information on that. Of course, we have the police department narrowband radio system that they use. Public Works has a radio system. And our parks, uh, have a radio system, uh, that we can use also. So, uh, that, that's kind of an overview, uh, of what we have at this point in time. Uh, and, uh, so Lincoln Alerts, uh, you know, we'll do some more. Hopefully, I'll be able to get a report on that. We did try to send some information out initially, uh, just to the city employees, and Lincoln Alerts was not working initially, uh, out of our dispatch center in the police department. Uh, so, uh, I think we also have to be, uh, mindful that that system, uh, is going to be dependent on power, phone systems, internet, and that type of thing. It's, uh, it's not a 100% solution. The other area here is frequency of communications. When you go into a disaster, uh, you know, the, the very first part of it, in this case with the fire and people evacuating, it's very hectic. But the most important thing is to try and get on a frequent schedule of communications alerts, uh, that is coming out, uh, to the public. And of course, you're going to have to do it in many different venues, uh, whether it's social media or radio communications or message reader boards or different, uh, systems that are out there. Um, so Crisis Communicate, uh, excuse me. Lincoln City part of the County EOC Policy Group. Uh, first I would say that, uh, clearly, we should have had a representative in the County EOC. Uh, can't be, you know, you're going to have, we're going to have to train somebody up on some very basics to be able to know what to get and what to pull down from. The other thing that I've seen many recommendations is that we be part of the County Policy Group. Uh, I think that is a discussion, uh, that at least the mayor and, uh, Chair Katie Jacobson would have to have. In this particular case, uh, you know, it's hard to say what she would have done. Uh, but, uh, it is worth asking, uh, since we were so close to the disaster and obviously, there was a tremendous amount of people that thought Otis was part of Lincoln City. And, uh, so, uh, that is something that we need to, uh, to talk about. Keeping in mind that it is the county disaster and they're going to be making decisions, uh, based on the needs of the county. A crisis communications plan. Uh, so really, uh, clearly something we need to do. Uh, the first thing I would recommend is that we decide, uh, you know, what it is that we want to create, uh, in the way of a crisis communications plan or a group of people to handle communications. Uh, there is a tremendous amount of training that is available in many different venues on how to do that. And, uh, so we should develop, uh, a plan of what we want to actually have. And, uh, just for the sake of talking, you know, what you're really looking for, based on my experience, is you have a type of a joint information center that deals with social media, uh, public information, uh, output and input, and kind of those basic things of how to manage all the information that's coming, uh, into the city and out of the city. So, uh, I, I think that is something that potentially could be, uh, taken care of right away, uh, you know, with, uh, some training and developing, uh, the staff to do that. We talked a little bit about radio stations. Uh, you all know KBCH is a private entity. Uh, just for your knowledge, I talked to them the first six months I came to work for the city, and they kind of... and they kind of looked at me and shook their head and smiled at me. I said, "We need to move you out of the tsunami inundation zone, and we need to upgrade your equipment to include a generator." And, they said, "Thanks, we'll get back to you." You can imagine, they haven't gotten back to me yet. So, something that we can continue to work on. I think we need to take a look at two, you know, if we don't get that taken care of, I think there's some other opportunities, at least with the AM radio stations in Newport. And then, tsunami sirens. Just to make sure everybody's aware, they do not belong to the city. They belong to North Lincoln Fire and Rescue. They are a patchwork of old sirens that have been purchased or given away free to us from many other agencies or facilities, like the Trojan Nuclear Power Plant that was in Portland, or outside of Portland. When they dismantled all that, some of the sirens, I think, came here. So, you really have a patchwork of systems that produce a singular audible tone. Excuse me, tone. And I would also add to the fact, you know, that if we do do something with the tsunami siren system, we have to be very, very careful as we educate people, because I think everybody's somewhat accustomed to the test each week and the sound of a tsunami. And if you start changing sounds for different reasons, we're gonna have to be very careful in how we teach. And we're gonna have to be very careful on how we eventually tell people, like the vacation rental folks that come to town. You know, part of that education is, you know, how you're gonna determine what tone means what. So, devils in the details on that particular item. Okay. An emergency operations center. You could have stood up an EOC during this event, but I would tell you, keep in mind how many employees may not have been available due to the evacuation, and how many employees would you take away from their normal duties of helping the community to go to an EOC. It is a tough decision of how to do that. And I will tell you, we do not have enough employees in the city of Lincoln City to fully staff two shifts of an EOC running 24 hours a day. So, I think we need to take a look. Some of the things I've done in the past in some jobs is you have a kind of a phased approach, but you have to be very careful in staffing it, especially in this case, where it's not necessarily our disaster, but we're still feeling the effects of it, and our people are busy helping and that kind of thing. So, maybe a graduated phased-in approach. But, at a minimum right now, the way I have it set up, it takes 30 employees each shift to run the EOC, just for your information. Training, no question, you can never do enough training on how to run an EOC. So, we have to be prepared for that, and make sure that our departments clearly have buy-in and understand the need and the importance to consistently train on EOC operations and that type of thing. Policy group. Would love to have the policy group, the city council, and the city manager join us. It's always important to have that group of people available, you know, to work the issues and help us through those. Equipment. We got lucky, kind of, but not really. We had bought some laptops for the EOC, and COVID took care of that stockage right away. We did not have enough laptops to be able for people to go home and work remotely. And, so, need laptops to be able to have them sitting ready. And there's many other things when you have an EOC, even simple things like whiteboards. Need to have some GIS capability. You have to have some signage capability in dealing with those kind of things. And potentially, you have to have the ability, depending on what problems and disasters you're in, that you may have to sleep at your EOC, cots, blankets, and food stocks, if you don't have things available. And then, we've talked already of the staffing challenges that we have to go through to do that. In this particular case, you know, in the initial stages of the fire and straight-line wind events, you know, we were doing a very modified EOC, working through the issues based on how many people were evacuating, and people that were available and not available. And, so, I think, as Chief Palmer said, it was effective. Was it efficient? Probably not. But we had to do what we had to do based upon the situation. The next area, evacuation. Again, I'm gonna tell you what you already know, we have a limited road network. That is not news to anybody. It is something that we have to think through very hard. Our road networks are managed by different people. We have county, state, and city. So, I think it's gonna be very critical as we look at developing evacuation plans, that we really take into account who the managers are of those roads, and what their intents are, and how we can deal with those issues. I'm pretty sure we're not gonna get any brand-new roads built right away, but we need to have a plan to use what we have right now. An example, Highway 229 that goes to Suletts was not used during this evacuation. So, that may have been an answer. Also, during evacuation, you usually have people to do traffic control, checkpoints and things like that. That is difficult. Again, we don't necessarily have enough police officers or other staff trained in putting that together. So, it is something that we will have to take a look at, and it will need to be worked with the rest of the county as we go through this, because if we go south at all, clearly is gonna involve the rest of the county. And, going east or north becomes a challenge, just because of the size of the highways, and in this case with the fire, may make the roads impassable altogether. The decision to evacuate and return. Decisions to evacuate are made by the fire incident commander on the ground. They know the behavior of the fire, they know the status of their equipment that is fighting the fire, and they make a recommendation to the county, in this particular case, who owned the disaster, and be able to decide, you know, what levels of evacuation are recommended based upon the fire behavior. So, I think, you know, if we would have had a person stationed in the County EOC or in the policy group, that probably would have helped us to know that information as far enough in advance as we possibly could. Training on Level 1, 2, and 3. We've had that information available for a long time. I presented it to many classes, but we need to keep presenting it so we have a better understanding of what Level 1, 2, and 3 means, which can be applicable to any disaster that we use if the road networks are up and running. So, we will continue to do that. I think one of the things I'm sure most of you may have observed, I think we need to do a lot of training with the public. Even when North Lincoln City was in a Level 3 evacuation, mid and south Lincoln City areas, people were leaving anyway. And that just added, you know, to the traffic jam. So, I'm not sure you can ever stop that, but we surely can continue to educate people and make sure that they have a full understanding of that type of thing. And the same thing goes with return to the area. Again, based upon the firefighters that are on the front line and the command of the incident, they can make recommendations based upon how much of the fire has been contained or is put out, and that there is no longer a threat to that. And, so, it works the same in reverse, and then they work with the policy group at the county level. So, finally, training and preparedness for emergencies. You can never train the employees enough, and you never can train the public enough. Question is, getting people's interest. Human nature is very predictable. I can tell you, prior to this fire, I tried many times to have businesses come to classes and the public. And, I will tell you, the results were not favorable. Now, I will tell you, now, the results will be great. My goal in this job is how do you make those great results happen when there's nothing going on? So, I think we need to really think about how we encourage the public, you know, that this is all about, kind of like an insurance policy, you know. You try and have things in place now, it may never happen, but if you have things in place now, and you're trained up for it, and you're prepared for it, most likely, you'll have a much easier time of it. Keep in mind, we are still in a pandemic, so we can't fill hundreds of people into a room, but we can do many, many classes and that kind of thing, where we can give them the basics. We can provide a lot of stuff online, which I would submit to you, a lot of it's there. But we can organize it different to try and encourage people to focus on those very basic things that they need to do. And we can make that kind of split into two things, one for the public and one for businesses. Now, something I've worked on for 21 years is how do you convince businesses to have generators? I have not yet found the answer after 21 years, other than if you lose everything enough times, amazingly, you'll buy a generator. So, I worked nine years on Safeway and Tillamook before they actually capitulated and moved their store. So, I think we need to try and educate, and maybe help them look for grants for different things. But clearly, McKay's Grocery City Generator was a success in a lot of ways. Obviously, having our system of generation for Carson Oil helped. But I think there's some other things that we can continue to work on to try and have some very basic things operational in the city and when we have a disaster. Now, easy to say to buy a generator, to maintaining it and fueling it during a disaster, you continue to create a bigger spread of to-dos that you have to take care of. But I think it would help, you know, and I'm not advocating everybody buy a generator, but I think if you have them properly positioned throughout the city, it makes life easier. I do advocate that every family, if they can afford it, should have a generator, even a small one. You know, my first generator I ever bought was just enough to run my coffee pot. That way, I could face each day during a disaster. So, I graduated though now into a bigger generator, and go from there. And I think we need to do more to teach city preparedness. I think there's lots of things that we can, you know, really reflect on, on how we might be able to deal with different issues. And, radio systems, different communication systems. We still haven't finished our caches, you know, and that's nobody's fault other than COVID. And, you know, kind of freezing the city budget because we were losing money. So, but we still need to fix those and get them fully implemented. So, I'm going to stop there. Those are kind of the four big buckets. Trust me, I could have spoke for another couple hours on all the issues that I have heard of. I'm sure you probably can too. But I guess I would open it up now, Mr. Mayor, if we kind of want to go through and talk about things. I do plan on, depending on what you tell me, putting together some more detailed plans that we can discuss. And I'll be very honest with you, some of them are gonna cost money, and some of them are gonna take some time, or they're not overnight fixes. So, Mr. Mayor.
Ken, before we open it up, could you or Jerry help us understand, you know, what's gonna happen next? Are we going, we, the city, going to produce some kind of a report to the county? And is that made public? And what kind of format does that, you would look like?
Mr. Mayor, the, there's no requirement that I'm aware of that we have to send the county a report. Although, I think it would not be a bad thing that we have a report kind of talking about the things that between us and the county, like we should have a person at the EOC and a person in the policy group. And even to the facts, I would even go so far as to say that with everybody's permission, we should have the ability to send out Lincoln Alerts for the whole county. And it's not just Lincoln City. I would say, you know, that, you know, different portions of the county should have that capability, because the next disaster, Lincoln, or Newport, could be non-functional, and they may not be able to send them out. So, and it would be public, you know, and I don't have a problem with that. I think people have a very, somewhat good perception of what they saw or heard, although I think it's important to put down the facts, you know, so that people can do it. So, I think it is something that we should do, whatever you recommend.
And then, I'd also tell you that Sheriff Landers and I and my staff and Ken have also been in communication. Probably in the next week or two, we'll be having a combined debrief with them to compare notes on what was working, what wasn't working. And then, I would hope that an overview of how the event went down county-wide would be coming out of the county emergency operations.
Thank you. So, Ken and Chief, what would be most helpful, what, you know, for the council to provide you some input? I would hope, since they've heard your summaries, that we don't have to repeat, you know, what's been already identified, but if there's some observations perhaps of things not touched upon, would that be helpful? Or what would you like to hear from us?
For me, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be observations that you have not heard me talk about or emphasize on certain things. And then, I think that would help me a lot to include other areas that I may have not touched upon. I mean, believe me, there's a lot of areas that I didn't mention that we should work on. But I think observations that you have not heard, or any other comments, because with your direction, and I think the other thing is looking for your direction on at least advice on what should we try and do first. I know that's a very tough question, but I have some recommendations.
And Chief, does that work for you? And Chief, does that work for you?
Yes, sir. I think the thing to get on the table here is just any information that you think wasn't covered here. I suspect that depending on how deep into the weeds we want to go with minutia, you'll find that most of the concerns fall within the categories that Ken mentioned. But once we get that on the table, it really comes down to, as a policy group and the leaders of our city, coming to some decisions on what's the most effective way to spend our time and money in the near future to improve upon our system, knowing that we're not going to be able to tackle every detail on this. And even the stuff we do choose to go after is going to take some time and effort to make it happen.
Okay. All right. So council, kind of open it up to you, some additional add-ins that you didn't hear that you want to get on the table? Council Casper, go ahead.
Somebody mentioned something about the tsunami evacuation sites. And I just wanted to relate an experience that we had, and I don't know if all of you were around. But Mr. Mayor and I were amongst the first CERT classes here in the city. And it was shortly after that, we had the Fukushima tsunami warning. And it impacted the Nelskott and Cutler City people. And at that time, we were evacuated, all of us down here. We went up to the high school because that was our evacuation point. And we learned a lot about what to do with dogs and people and it was, it was very effective. In fact, about having been there for four hours, I snuck back and wanted to see what was going on. And of course, the water was way out. And lo and behold, everybody on the west side of the freeway was having lunch and driving up and down. But the fact was, the evacuation drill worked and I found it most effective. And maybe to think about something like that, even if we did it in segments of the city with whatever tourists happened to be at the time, it certainly tuned up my awareness.
Sure. Okay. Good recommendation.
Others? Counselor Mark.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, and of course, Ken touched on both of the things, but just to be a little more specific, the thoughts I had had to do with, I'm wondering if it's possible to not only utilize, better utilize the local radio stations. I wonder if there's a way. I started out thinking, could it be a city radio station that, you know, would be with a tower out of the tsunami zone with power generator? And the more I thought about that, I thought, well, why not a county radio station? So the more I thought about that, I thought, well, should there be a network up and down the entire coast? So bring in, I don't know, obviously what money we're running into, with electronic message boards. So for example, in this case, someone who happened to be driving south from Tillamook might have been given an alert that there was something going on and don't come this way. And how would that person have gotten that sort of notice? So that's, I wonder if we can expand on that idea. And I wonder if there would be state money, you know, to make something like that happen. The other thing had to do and with the evacuation routes, Ken touched on it. Sluts Highway could have been better used. And I mentioned a couple of people that there's a South Drift Creek Road connects, it actually would have been possible for people to have been turned off of Highway 101 onto 32nd Street and subsequently High School Drive, 48th Street. Those people could have been directed to Schooner Creek Road, Anderson over to Drift Creek Road. And that's a road that, I drove it yesterday. It's a pretty decent road and hundreds of cars could have been diverted. Then that goes to the question of who makes that decision? And I hope that's on somebody's checklist of things to be aware of, that there actually might be some alternate route. This was a good lesson for us in the sense that who could have predicted that something, well, I guess predictable, but here was a case where our two of our major routes out of the city were blocked. And how bizarre was that? So I guess that's, I guess that's right.
Counselor Mark, I'd like to actually make a couple of comments to that. So creating a rural side road diversion out to Highway 229, especially as rapidly as the situation was being affected, would require significant manpower either for traffic control or to at least deploy detour signs to get people started there. And then you need to kind of also take a look at what traffic are you trying to get out there? Is it going to be all passenger cars? Are you going to start sending, you know, 60-foot motorhomes out that direction? Is truck traffic going to go out that direction? But the other thing to keep in mind as you look at the scope of things as we're trying to evacuate the city proper, even if East Devils Lake Road and West Devils Lake Road were still open, that's it. Every place that you leave from in Lincoln City eventually comes to a pinch point. East Devils Lake Road ends at Highway 101 on one end and ends at Highway 101 on the other end. West Devils Lake Road ends on Highway 101 off 14th Street and Highway 101 on the other end. And throughout our city, we have one-lane pinch points. The Schooner Creek Bridge, you know, after we come down into Nelskott, and again, as we go out through Tacoma and then leave the area there up at Loganona and continue north. So the traffic jams that we are experiencing are not going to be alleviated even if those roads were open. You know, our one chance in trying to relieve that pressure in my mind is finding some way to help control the exodus. As Ken said earlier, a big problem was the Level 3 evacuation notice for the north end of town came out after a lot of those people had already left and gone to work, had done about their duties. They're now struggling to try to get back to evacuate your families while other people up there are trying to evacuate out. People are trying to evacuate northbound. And then the rumor mill started and now we have Level 2 and Level 1 areas trying to evacuate at the same time or clogging up the gas stations to the point they're clogging off Highway 101. So it's, it's a very, very tough situation when you need to try to look at evacuating a good part of, if not an entire city. And then you throw a couple of road closures on that and it just gets even worse. But a lot of it, once you get out of town, like Highway 229, the access from Drift Creek and those things, again, come down to where do we find the manpower to get traffic directed that way? Maybe some of the locals know, but if you're diverting, which the larger part of our population, which is tourists, they're not going to have a clue how to go the direction you turn them unless you have good signage and traffic control. So it's, it's a very complicated situation and I'm not sure there's a really good answer in it.
Counselor hinted.
Chief, I'm glad you're talking about that because that's one of the main things on my list, beyond communication in general. But I was just wondering, because you were talking about the number of people that would be required to help direct traffic. And that is one thing that I would have been willing to do had I known what to tell people and even to provide information while we were sitting in line for a couple of hours, you know, bumper to bumper. And had there been some way to communicate with a few people in each area or one person in each area and have them pass the word along like I was willing to do while I was sitting there? If I would have known what to say, that Highway 101 was closed to the north, which we need to talk about, but anyway, was closed to the north, people would have understood why it was taking a while. And if they, if that would have been coupled with information of where exactly the fire was at the moment, that would have made people understand a little bit better because there was no understanding at that point of where the fire was and why we weren't moving in traffic. And of course, that goes to all the other points that have been said. We need to find a way, we had levels of evacuation and we had, we had a situation that could have become a panic situation in Level 3 because we couldn't get out. And we couldn't get out because partially, what you mentioned, Level 2 and Level 1 were already on the road. And, you know, that's inexcusable. I know that some people have told me that living, especially Level 2 area, that they got out because they had X, Y, Z reason or X, Y, and F reasons. And it's like, okay, fine, but there's got to be a way to manage this a little better. And so that's one thing. Another thing is Lincoln alerts. If you were able to receive them, you couldn't open them to read them. And so there's two things there. If they would have come in a, in a way that if someone could receive them, that the information was available right there as you open Lincoln alerts, or if you even could, or even on the front of it before you opened it, that would have been really helpful because as it was, there wasn't any way to get to the information. And I'm interested in also a communication plan for the city. I think all of the, not all of the comments, at least that I've received from people and read of those that sent them in, were communication-based. And I've been talking about risk communication management for years with the city. It's very, very important. And I'm going to underline that again. It's, you know, the information is out there, how to do it and how to develop these plans and how to manage the information and it's available. So I think we need to try harder to get to that. And about the evacuations, Mark, if we, you know, if we put a group together to actually look at the things that, such as Counselor Mark was talking about, I was unaware that all those roads connected. I guess they don't drive around enough. But if we could somehow start working on that, I think that would be very helpful. And there are numerous honors of the roads and we could do a partnership thing. And I'm wondering, Ken, you can answer this in a minute, but I'm wondering if there is FEMA dollars available for mitigation for evacuation routes, which I think there is. And then, and an evacuation drill, that makes me think of the October Shake It Up, or I can't remember the correct term, but the one for the...
Shake Out.
Shake Out, thank you. Yeah. For that, that's already, you know, people will do that if they're reminded to do it. And radio station, I mentioned before that I had had some research provided to me by Brown Broadcast Services, Inc., only because they are longtime friends of mine. And they helped build the kayak radio station. They were the engineers for that. It took a couple of years to put that together. But I was sent this, which I don't know if you can see it, but there are two opportunities right now of, I'm not sure what you call them, of areas that you can apply to own or manage. I'm not quite sure of the lingo here. But my point is that a public radio station that has weather information, has tidal information, has kink time information, has weather information, and that could also be used specifically for an event like what we had. Or even if we were doing a drill, I think it'd be a good way to get information out that way too. And anyway, I have some information that this firm sent to me and I'd be happy to pass it on, I'm thinking about. And I guess the other thing is just that was mentioned to me, and I think we received an email about it, but we didn't talk about were handmade or printed flyers that could go on city property or other property, letting people know kind of where to go or what to do. And this is like after the, you know, like evacuees, where do you go or what's available for assistance? What's a phone number? How do you get into the city building? I mean, that kind of thing. And then just more discussion about FEMA dollars that are available. We just received information that there was another public assistance, emergency work in the repair and replacement of disaster damaged facilities. We just got that, the governor just approved that. So there's, there's some money, some FEMA money out there. And I know that staff time can't be used for certain things. I mean, you can't claim it with FEMA for certain things, but I'd be interested in more of that. And one more thing, I probably have more, but one more thing in particular is just about how council can be, can be utilized in this situation. I am very, very disappointed in how we were just, you know, kind of, I don't know, I don't, I didn't, the only time I felt connected was when Ron would call us, you know, a couple times a day and that was really helpful. But, you know, that you have, you have a lot of value in the counselors that are on this city council, a lot of value. We all have different, different aspects and strengths that we bring with us. And some of those were, we were able to see during this time when everyone stepped up to do what they could do. And there's a way to lasso that energy and expertise and we didn't do that.
Okay. Let's see, you know, Chief Palmer, the, actually, the only thing I found that hasn't been mentioned is I got some reports more, more in the rural area. It appeared to be some people, I think officials, knocked on doors trying to get people to evacuate, but they were in civvies. And there were suspicion of, you know, false, false information and, you know, coming in later to loot and all that type, kind of taking advantage of the situation. So I know out Schooner Creek Way and I heard that from some of those folks. So they, you know, they couldn't see the fire, didn't feel the fire and they were a little suspicious. I don't know how prevalent that was, but that was the only thing I heard.
Yeah, that's the first I've heard of it. The people that the sheriff's office and I and Newport PD, OSP deployed to help evacuate those areas were all in some kind of uniform, well-marked. So if there were people in complete civilian clothes, the only thing I can be aware of unless I get something from the sheriff's office that says otherwise is that they were local residents out there that were trying to spread the word. But I haven't...
That might have been.
Haven't heard of any, any looting or burglaries that have been, of any significance that's related to this event.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Counselor Oakland.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate, you know, all the things that you brought up, Ken. It was a lot of it, as we all heard. I was thinking and heard if we had, and to follow, I think Deanna, you were talking about having volunteers or, you know, using council as well. You know, if we have these major areas that are coming into and onto the highway, if each kind of neighborhood had a team of representatives that worked with the emergency response team and were there at like, say, I don't know, Holmes Road or Southeast 3rd Street or not necessarily Southeast 3rd, but the other one, like right there by the Goodwill, you know, they're notifying people as they were leaving. So I think that there's an opportunity to ask for people who want to volunteer in those times. We saw so many people step up and it was wonderful. And then if we could, like Deanna was saying, lasso everybody together, that would be great. And yeah, if somehow the police could support a radio station or, you know, something like that with the information being sent out and then it could say, hey, if you're, and then we could tell people, if you're the northwest corner, southwest corner, you could leave or not leave, you know, and this is what's going on. I think it would just... I think it would just, if we could work towards that, I think that would help and let a lot of people hear that, yep, there are things we could have done better, and we're looking to do that, so. And thank you for everybody that did participate, I mean, it was great. So, that's all. Thanks, guys.
All right. Counselor Parsons?
Yeah, I completely agree that we've pretty much touched on every subject. I'm 100% with looking into the radio station situation. Something we haven't touched on and might want to use this event to look at is prevention and mitigation. Fires travel different, this one seemed to crawl along the ground, and we have a lot of forested area in town. So as a city, we might want to look at how we go about being prepared for this going forward.
Go ahead.
No, I don't, it's all your, Ken?
Well, let Counselor hit, and she had her hand up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one thing that I was going to ask about, and it's off this topic just a smidgen, is the, how and I'm not going to get the name right, the mitigation plan, one second. Can't find my notes on it. Anyway, there's a mitigation plan that each city did their part.
Right, cross call, didn't it?
To the county, and it goes up and up and up, and it's in a process now. The mitigation, I mean, the comment period for the public was closed on the second, and then it comes loops back around. But I'm just curious about, there were some updates to that, Ken, just this year, you probably made them.
Yeah, I did.
And I'm wondering, when can we have a discussion about all of that? Because that's apropos of what we're talking about now, and there are some things that you've removed for good reasons, some others that I have questions about, and things like that. So can we set a time to go through that in some detail, so we on council know what the heck it is that we're proposing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was coming. We were waiting for public comment, and then, kind of depending on this fire and a few things, we were going to schedule a time to walk through the mitigation plan. A lot of it is fluff, if you will, demographics, general information, but there are some projects in there that you, that we've used, and actually been around for years. Some of them I got rid of because they were never going to happen, and they didn't make sense. But we'll schedule a time to go through that mitigation plan.
All right. So how could we, how could we be most helpful to you, Ken?
One comment, I just have to say, chasing Facebook rumors took a tremendous amount of time, and one that I have yet to publish is, the chief and I sat through a debrief with the hospital, and numerous, oh, the hospital doesn't have a generator, and it was never working. Well, that is the farthest thing from the truth. It worked just fine when it was turned on. Most people didn't pay attention to the fact that the hospital evacuated. So they had a good plan, the evacuation went well, down Holmes Road with police escort to get those patients out of there. So I think it worked well, and their generator works just fine, so. I think, Mr. Mayor, at this point in time, with the direction of Chief Palmer and Mr. Chandler, I would like to make, at the next meeting or whenever's appropriate, a proposal of what we should look at trying to fix in some sort of a graduated timeline of what we need to deal with. And I will try and break it down in such a way that, here's what we could start on right away. Here is going to take some thought by the city council when it comes to priorities of money and time. And so I think that would give me, you know, where I need to kind of focus my efforts, because if something is going to require some time and money, like building, expanding Highway 101, probably I am not going to work on that right away.
Okay.
But I think that would be most helpful.
Counselor Mark, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a couple of thoughts. I haven't heard, excuse me, I did hear from the public questions about the involvement of CERT, which I haven't seen much from them lately. I wonder if they've, if someone knows kind of where that stands. And the other question I had, this is, I just want to, just something on my mind, is the cell service, and is there any sort of technology for those, like, what is it that caused the cell towers to go out? And is there any possible backup system for them? Because that was, that was a huge, huge problem. And I guess the third thing, and this goes to educating the public, and sort of following along the lines of Level 1 and 2 people who should have been, not just asked, but told to stay home until we clear Level 3, I think that might have been helpful. And also, I'd heard that there were, I understand everybody's instinct to protect their property, but, you know, take, if you're a two-car family, just take one car, and don't tow your boat, and make sure you have gasoline, that you didn't get your tank on empty before you left the house. And be equipped in those sorts of things, and just be aware of the things that you need to do to take care of yourself. So I think more, you know, guidance along those lines, of course, might help.
Yeah, Counselor Mark, first, in regards to CERT, currently our CERT is wholly a North Lincoln Fire operation. So the questions regarding the status of that, and they absolutely control what they do, when they do it, and how they're deployed. So that'd be a question probably for Chief Dolman to get involved with. And then, yeah, I'll leave it for there. Counselor Hen, you had your hand up? Sorry, I had some more there, but I can't remember what.
No, I was just going to put a PS on the CERT thing. We have a couple of CERT folks in our neighborhood, and I was told that CERT was, right now, only delivering meals for the Red Cross to the folks that are put up in hotels and motels, and that they were not doing traffic control. They're nothing except delivering meals.
And I will, let me add to that. I wasn't waiting for Chief Dolman because he was kind of busy, and I gave him the mission to help the Red Cross. And that was after we got through some of the stuff. I just tasked him to do it because I know a lot of them. And so I think that might be just something as simple as us talking to Chief Dolman, because in a fire situation, he's kind of busy, and pretty sure he doesn't have the time to deal with the CERT. So I think we can work something out there.
And going back to your evacuation question, Counselor Mark, I think this comes back to more education, more education, more education. You know, for instance, in this case, let's talk about the north end of town going into Level 3, and running into a roadblock. And had we truly had a fire cresting and getting close to, truly threatening everybody up there with a traffic jam, how many people realized that they could actually get out of their car, leave their car parked, walk to the beach, or walk a half a mile south and be in a Level 2 zone, and be out of immediate danger? Yes, they would be without their car. You know, maybe they had their emergency pack in their car that they could take with them, maybe they didn't, depending on how prepared. Again, that's more education, more education. But just because the word evacuation goes out, doesn't mean that you're going to be able to, or if it's even appropriate, to think about, oh, I'm going to need to go to Newport, I'm going to need to go to Crow Valley, I'm going to need to go to Portland. It may be as simple as walking a half a mile beyond where you're at and getting in a safe zone, and then figuring out how we go from there. So it's just, again, comes down to education and getting people trained to think outside the box if things aren't going the way they're, they expect them to go.
Good point. Yes, Mr. Chandler? You're muted.
Just real quick, as you're wrapping up this meeting, public comments that I will be posting, just need to make sure that everybody understands what is being posted. These are the comments that have come to me through the publiccomment.org email. There's been a lot of emails that have flown all over the place, but these are the ones that have come to me either through a counselor or directly into the publiccomments.org email.
Okay. Mr. Chandler, while you're still open there, you know, since you're responsible for staff, you know, I hate going directly to Mr. Murphy and putting obligations on him. So through you, what's a sensible expectation for some kind of, you know, that level of recommendations that Ken was talking about getting back? We're now into, you know, October, you know, you end up with limited meetings in November and December, and, you know, but yet, at the same time, you know, we start in January and February, but, you know, thinking of budget and goals. So, you know, I guess I just throw it back to you, trying to see where this might be expected.
Well, I guess the thing that I will be asking of Ken and the chief is to divide these ideas and recommendations into two parts. Those that don't require a lot of money, things that we could make and things that we could do without a huge expenditure, and those can come back as soon as they have them prepared, as soon as they're ready to go. The second group would be those that are financial in nature, that are going to have a significant budgetary impact. For example, we've talked about radios, and upgrading our radio systems, or even running a radio system, that's a major budgetary decision. Those ones, as you mentioned, we start working in force on the budget, we're actually working on it now, but we really start with the city council after the first of the year, when we have your priority session sometime towards the end of January. And so, those items that are really big budgetary items, I don't expect that we'll really get into those into detail until we're into next spring, or first, right after the first of the year, and then really into next spring when we go into our budget process.
So, I guess, would we see, would, now, I guess I'm still looking for direction and expectation of what the council would perhaps see from Ken, those two areas, but by, you know, November or December meeting, or what would be sensible?
I would propose to Mr. Chandler and the chief, I can have a fairly good outline of no-money versus money projects by the first of November.
And Mr. Mayor, I guess there's one other category I would ask that these two gentlemen put together. I think it's important we never forget that this was a multi-jurisdictional emergency. There was no single agency that, where it was happening in just their community, which has made it a unique emergency for me. In the emergency, I've been involved in other communities. They have been just a single jurisdiction. This is a multi-jurisdiction one. So the other recommendation, or the assignment I would give to these two gentlemen is to create a third category that says, these are the recommendations we need to make to the county on the improvement of the multi-jurisdictional nature of an emergency.
That sounds good. All right, Mr. Parsons, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we could be specific about where we're going to post the public comment, and if it's on the website, if we could link it to the Facebook page.
We'll do it, well, four different ways. First of all, it will go into the record as part of this meeting, and I'll give that to our IT folks. Second is that we'll put a Facebook with a link. Third, it'll link it to our city's webpage, and fourth, it'll link it to Ron's report blog.
Great, thank you. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Chief and Ken, for, you know, pulling this together. To me, it was very distinct and hit all the topics that I've been hearing, so I think we're covered there. And I appreciate the next steps being, you know, recommendations broken down into different categories, so that we can kind of pick off the easy ones and make sure those get accomplished early and quick, and then move towards the more impactful ones, so. With that, any, anything good of the order? Counselor Parsons? No? Okay.
I just forgot to unraise it.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Well, with that, thank you very much, and we'll then adjourn the work session. Thank you for spending the time.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.